I'd like to call to order the April 25th, 2023 meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. Mary, will you call the roll, please?
Absolutely. Whoa.
Here.
Petway.
Here.
Maderis.
Here.
Granland.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Superintendent Stenvik.
Here.
Thank you. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We have our agenda approval adjustments and announcements. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Hearing then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next, our announcements. On May 9th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there is a regular school board meeting here in the community room. On May 16th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there is a school board work session here in the community room. On May 23rd, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, it's a regular school board meeting in the community room. And on May 29th, Monday, there is no school. One item to note for the board, there is no subcommittee on policy in May. So that meeting has been canceled. Next, we'll move to communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. We do have Arian and Mike. They would like to come on up. Great. And we are back online and we did have two teachers, an art music teacher, come and talk to the board about the value of the arts programs, both performance and visual, as well as sharing about all of the upcoming activities and performances and opportunities to see our students find work. So I will mention to the people listening out there to check the school calendars and the website for the calendar of all the amazing events coming up. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report from April 25th and the treasurer's reports from January of 2023 and February of 2023. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mary, in a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? Hearing then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next, we have our acknowledgement of contributions, and this is a resolution, so I will read this and then ask for a motion in a second to vote on this. Acknowledgement of contributions resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $20,800. The background includes monetary donations. A donation of $100 was made to Columbia Heights Activities Department by Sunshine and Clay Carter for support of the Columbia Academy Musical. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights Activities Department by the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters Club, $1,500 to boys tennis and $1,500 for girls lacrosse. The following donations were made to Columbia Heights High School for the New York Studies Seminar. Jeffrey and Kristen Wilson, $300. Italian American Club, $3,000. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund. American Endowment Foundation, $5,000. Jean and Robert Richard, $100. COP Family Foundation, $2,000. Diane and Gerald Bolt, $100. Dean and Joyce Bliss, $100. Carolyn Bang, $25. Glenda Gore, $50. Michelle Edwardson, $100. Doris and Harlan Downing, $200. Eva and Daniel Coverston, $100. Elise Boquist, $100. Howard and Nan Hornbrook, $250. Paul Hanson, $75. Jay and Hennessy, $200. Stephen and Paul Hall, $100. Nicole Halaby, $100. Randy and Kathy Kelly, $1,000. Ralph Carkey, $200. John and Kathleen Kane, $500. Corliss Johnson, $25. Gail Hubel, $25. Katie McAvoy, $200. Philip London, $100. Janet Larson, $150. Wayne and Linda Kutske, $50. Tammy Cooglin, $20. Stephanie Novak, $100. Coleman Nemirov, $200. Edwardson Nelson, $1,000. Elaine Narbo, $100. Thomas Mulligan, $250. Gerald and Marilyn Riding, $500. Jean and Robert Richards, $25. Luann Rennstedt, $40. Ann O'Neil, $200. Brian and Mary Lee Olin, $500. Pam Segertson, $300. Carol and Charles Offson, $115. Albert and Marin Ogde, $50. Betty Winberg, $50. Roger and Karen Sadowski, $100. Total fiscal year 2023-2022-2023 monetary contributions to date is $106,559.90. Can I get a motion to move that resolution forward?
So moved.
Julie, in a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion?
I mean, I think we say every week, like how blessed we are, and that is truly always the case. We feel really blessed and grateful for the community members. I think it's also amazing and speaks volumes to see former staff who are donating, including our former superintendent. So, you know, we are doing really great work here and it is all because and for our community. So thank everybody for all of your support.
It's not often that I think you all like to hear me read long resolutions, but this is one that definitely is an honor to read all of those names. And like Mary said, I will reiterate that there are a number of community members and families on here and a number of staff members, both current and former. And it just shows a dedication, ongoing dedication to our students, and we are very appreciative of that. Any other discussion? Mary, since this is a resolution, will you call the roll, please?
I will. Whoa.
Aye.
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Maderis?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you. Next, we have our discussion reports and information items, starting with reports from members of the board, and we will start with Laura.
I had a feeling you were going to start with me. I just knew it. Okay, so I attended a couple of chair meetings. I had conversations with, I believe, everybody at this table, and thank you very much for your time on various subjects and consultation. I do appreciate your time. I also attended the work-study session last week and had the wonderful joy and opportunity to see our student school board members in action at the very first conference to working with their peers, their fellow student school board members. And I mean, oh my gosh, we are so incredibly lucky to the dedication at that table and just how they were able to work together and they found their voice. It was just absolutely incredible, and I'm very grateful to Xena and MSBA for being able to sponsor that event and all the people that went into that. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thanks, Laura. Julie?
April 13th, I met with Superintendent Stenvik, Board Chair Mueller, Director Hennickens, and Representatives MSBA to discuss my role as treasurer and my requests for financial information. Director Hennickens and Superintendent Stenvik were very forthcoming in answering my questions to further my understanding of the district's finances. We came to an agreement on what reports I will be reviewing, as well as details that I will be requesting for review, so I can provide the oversight responsibilities that are required of the treasurer. And I will be providing a brief update on my review as part of the reports from members of the board each month. And in light of that, on April 13th, I have reviewed the treasurer's report for January and February, which are included in the consent agenda, and have submitted my questions, and we're going to meet next week, which is to be determined yet on what time, but we'll go over those items that I had questions on. And then I also participated in the board work session on April 18th, and I also received an email from Athletics Director Jake Henderson, and as MSHSL liaison, I have the opportunity to cast my vote for a potential new board member, and I believe Xena also has a vote, and I'm kind of excited about that. And we received the applications, resumes, and I've reviewed them, and I'm doing my other research just to see if, you know, who I'd like to pick. And so I'm excited about that. And then I'd also like to remind you that I will not be here May 9th for that meeting. So I just kind of, that's it.
Perfect. Thanks, Julie. Michelle?
Hello. So I also attended the work session last week, and after that, I attended our first meeting for the Subcommittee for Community Engagement, and we just went over what we would want to do. We also had a listening session before this meeting today, and I have had conversations with Member Palmer, Maderis, Granland, as well as Superintendent Stenvik. We did a tour of Highland last week. Was it last week, I believe? And we had, we did have a panel discussion last week as well, Superintendent Stenvik and Member Granland and I, and that was interesting. Great experience there. I've been doing some of my MSBA training as well. I actually think I have my last one tomorrow for Phase 5, so that'll be a nice, fun four hours. I've been, I, oh, I also did the Earth Day cleanup this past weekend as well, so that was fun. I actually got to clean up over here at Ramstow. I got to clean up over there at the park. My husband, daughter, and I did some cleanup over there, so that was fun. And make sure I didn't miss anything. Oh, North Park. I've been over at North Park a little bit. I've been organizing for our up-and-coming Families of Color meeting, as well as had conversations with the Principal Sausick over there. That's all I have. Thanks.
Excellent. Thanks, Michelle. Jessica?
Sure. Well, it's been, like many of you, a busy couple of weeks for me for board business. I attended the Highland PTO meeting. Like many of you, all of you, I attended the school board tour of Highland, the work session last week, the Subcommittee on Community Engagement, and I'll talk a little bit more in-depth about that later in the agenda. I volunteered at the Valley View Carnival on Friday, and so congrats to everybody who was involved in organizing that. It's a major event for them, and it had great turnout. It went really well. And also, my apologies to anyone whose hair I had to spray at the hair salon station at the carnival. I was doing hair color, and it was done with enthusiasm, but it was also pretty shoddy. So I appreciate the opportunity to volunteer. I also watched the MSBA webinar on opioid medication in Minnesota schools. I know we're going to have a little bit of policy conversation about that later. And then I also enjoyed the Highland Fine Arts Night last week, which did include band and choir. So that was really fun to see, and I love, really enjoy seeing the pride of performance and growth from all of the students and the support that's there for them. That's really great. And then alongside Director Granland, I was interviewed by some students about the work of the board for the Highlander News Network. And I think those students also interviewed one of my children about having a parent on the board, so I'm interested to see how that turned out. And I did attend the community engagement listening session prior to this meeting. We did have, we had one person in attendance, but it was someone who wears multiple hats as a constituent for the district, so that was really helpful and talked a little bit about the intersection of policy and finance and some of the offerings at our elementary schools. And then, like many of you, had conversations with several members of the board and stakeholders. Thanks.
Mary?
Okay, well, yes, it is the busy time of year for all of us, isn't it? I also attended the work session and the tour of Highland, which as somebody whose children have been at Valley View for the whole time is just, it is different because this layout is exactly the same except for the first floor where things are switched. So, and there's no uniforms, so it just kind of feels a little bit different. It's great. I love it, but I keep trying to go into the media center that's not the media center. Anyway, so it was delightful, though. I've been, you know, I've volunteered several times at Columbia Academy. I was at Valley View for Carnival. I had joked that with Ms. Berg that I may have made her mad somehow because I spent the entire time in gifts, like when people were turning in their tickets.
Prizes.
Yeah, prizes. Thank you. That's the word I was looking for. Yes. Because it was a long night. That is the longest of things. It's still delightful, though, and so many smiling faces. Wonderful to see the carnival sort of come back after the pandemic. It is just a riot. I also attended the Student School Board Representative, like, meeting that we had, and again, it was really wonderful to hear all of the students from, I mean, around, I mean, it's not even around the metro. It's like around the
Region.
Yes, the region. But there's so many people, and everybody coming together and talking about how much they enjoyed it and how important it was to them. Especially, there was one school where the rep said she was the only one. And this was the first time where she had an opportunity to talk with like-minded peers about the things that we're doing in our schools and they're doing in theirs and bringing that all together. They actually highlighted, this is a really great networking event. And I was like, oh, look at that. So it's really wonderful. As Member Maderis said, I also was interviewed for the Heights News Network. My son is getting back to the editor for that discussion. So again, yes, I will also be very interested to see how that goes. And then the school safety discussion last Wednesday, really wonderful, lots of good comments and conversation with, you know, the singular focus of keeping our kids safe. And then lots of conversations with staff, students, and families, including a meeting at CA while I was volunteering with Superintendent Stenvik, which was great. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. For my report, like all of you, I attended the Highland tour last week. It was great kind of being in there again after having not had kids in there for a little while. Also had the chair meeting last week, attended the work session and the Subcommittee on Community Engagement. Had the chair meeting tonight. Prior to this meeting, I had conversations with Member Granland, Member Palmer, and Superintendent Stenvik. I also, as Julia mentioned, attended the meeting with her regarding her treasurer role, and I thought that that was a really great meeting. So thank you all for your time in doing that. I also had some conversations with staff members and community members. And then the Chair of the St. Francis School Board had reached out to several school board members in our region with some questions about insurance and negotiations, so I got the information he requested back on that as well. And that is it for me. Yes, Laura?
You mentioned something. We actually had a tour of the family center, too. And I think that was the first time I'd ever had a complete tour of the family center, so I really definitely want to acknowledge getting that opportunity to see the great things that we do that, you know, are a little outside of the school-aged children. So I did want to mention that because I'd completely forgotten about that.
Thank you. Superintendent Stenvik, you have your report and correspondence?
Yes, I do. As mentioned, last week, Columbia Heights Public Schools hosted a regional student school board representative networking session. We need a shorter name for this thing if we continue to do it. The students who attended were very impressive, and it was a great day of camaraderie and solutions-oriented conversation. And the idea for it was really born from conversations at this board table. And it was planned in collaboration with our own student board reps, MSBA, and of course, Don Hoyam. Thank you. And just thank you to Vice Chair Palmer and Member Granland for attending and participating. It was really interactive day for everyone. We are generating a report of the ideas that were gathered through World Cafe-style discussions, and that will be shared in the near future. I also attended, as mentioned previously, the panel at First Lutheran Church to share about our approaches to school safety. So thank you again to Member Granland, Member Petway, Executive Director Niambui, and Principal Wynn for participating in that panel discussion. I met with the Student Guiding Coalition at Columbia Academy, and they had a lot of great ideas for like the general middle school experience, right? So we had a lot of takeaways from that meeting. These student leadership groups have really generated, elevated student voice, but generated some ideas, and they've been able to, like, actionable items, right, that the principals have been able to act on. It's exciting. I met with the American Indian Parent Committee. This year, they're reviewing American Indian units of study that we have in the different grade levels, and they're providing their input on that. So it's a really great interactive meeting that we've been, meetings that we've been having throughout the school year. Director Hennickens and I met with the owner and financial director of Monarch Transportation Company, and we discussed ideas for enhancing our transportation services. And then every two years by statute, teachers' contracts are negotiated through collective bargaining. Director Bennett and I met with local 710 union leadership for a preparatory meeting to get ready for negotiations this spring. Looking forward to collaborative conversations then. And for a second year in a row, the Columbia Heights High School graduation rate has been over 90%. So the state just released this week data on that, and I will be providing the board with more information. I had conversations with each and every board member, so I want to thank you all for your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have our presentation on the Northeast Metro 916 Agreement for Services with Director Godfrey and Megan Andreessen.
Presentation queued up here. Technical difficulty? Yes. Can you?
Okay.
It's saying it doesn't recognize me.
For the new board members, once upon a time, Director Hennickens was our technology director.
Of course he was.
I'm surprised he hasn't done every job in this building.
He still oversees that department, but it's not his daily work anymore.
I mean, isn't that under, like, other tasks as assigned?
Other duties, yeah.
No, it was, it was his. We have really great security, too.
Tech security, yes.
That's right. Lots of clicking. Now I just.
Share your screen?
I do. When it highlights. There we go. Okay. Thank you for your patience. Good evening, Chair Mueller, Superintendent Stenvik, and members of the board. I am Sarah Godfrey. I'm the Director of Special Education, and this is my coordinator, Megan Andreessen. We are going to be talking tonight about the 916 Agreement. So our mission in Columbia Heights is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values that we're focusing on are excellence and collaboration. The CHPS core values are aligned with the CHPS Board of Education Equity Statement. So tonight, this is an information item that we will be asking you to take action on on May 9th. So we have some information for you in the slide deck this evening. So 916, some of you are new here, so we'll talk a little bit about 916. Also, 916 is one of the four intermediate districts, so there's four now. There used to be three in Minnesota. 916 serves approximately 6,000 students in their programming through the sharing of resources, talent, and ideas. They provide expert and reliable related services that we'll talk about in a little bit to member districts, including ourselves, and a few other districts that surround us, too. And the students and families they collectively support. So you can see a little, a map here. So they provide specialized programming and supports to support students across the continuum of services. This may occur in a public, separate-day-school setting for program. We've talked about that a little bit before. Columbia Heights Public Schools currently has 29 students enrolled in Setting Four services across seven programs in 916, down from 34 last year. This school year, we've had four students transition back to a less restrictive environment within Columbia Heights Public Schools. That's transitioning from Setting Four 916. That's not including other Setting Fours with students that we get from other states or other districts. This school, we are proud to report that we have two graduates from 916 Setting Four programs, and those graduates include our 12th graders in 916 Setting Four programs. So our related services, physical therapists, deaf and hard-of-hearing, physical and health-disabled teachers, blind and visual impaired teachers, orientation and mobility, as well as occupational therapy assistance. We have licensed school nurses, school health specialists, speech and language pathologists, and consultation services in behavior, mental health, and programming. Because we are little, we take parts of FTE from 916, and some of those staff members, some of them are with us full-time, some of them are with us Point 2 or Point 3, so that we can share them with the surrounding districts, so that we don't have someone that we would actually need for Point 3 of an FTE hired on with us as full-time. Plus, it's really hard to find someone that wants to work Point 3. So these related services are tailored to individual district and student needs. As noted in the due process paperwork, they may need to be defined by the number of students, the type of support needed, or training requirements from a school site. The goal is to give member districts flexibility in meeting the special education needs of students by accessing services that provide direct student support, consultation, training, and technical guidance. And that's that related services piece that comes into our schools here in Columbia Heights. So again, the board will be asked to take action on the agreement for 916 to provide special education and related staffing to students enrolled in Columbia Heights for the 23-24 school year at the next school board meeting on May 9th, 2023. Thank you.
Any questions? Jessica?
So for the action item, then, will the board be presented with an agreement?
The amount? Yes.
Okay, so sometime between now and the next meeting, then, that will be available?
Yes.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, please.
Okay, thanks. First of all, we had the opportunity to have a presentation from the 916 Superintendent, and that was, as a new member, that was really helpful to get that and that was, as a new member, that was really helpful to get that overview of 916 and what they do and how we work with them. Definitely helps contextualize a little bit some of the, our understanding of some of the services that we use as a district. So, I'm really appreciative of that. You had mentioned the enrollment in setting four services is 29 this year, down from 34. And I'm just wondering generally what the trajectory has been over time, or what you are predicting for next year, not just for setting four, but, you know, the shared services that we're going to need as a district, too. Some of that might be in the agreement, but I...
For next year?
I guess, I guess maybe it's two questions.
Sure.
So, generally, what have you seen in terms of the trajectory or trend for the needs that we've had within our partnership with 916? And then, looking to next year, what sort of the, are we anticipating?
Sure. So, I'm new here, too, but I have, I do like data. And so, 2017, 2018, the number was higher. It was in the 60s, and after that, it went, it went down significantly to be in about the 30s. So, we've decreased from 29. We had those four students transition from 916 back here. So, part of that 34 is students coming back, going from 34 to 29, is some of them coming back, and some of them moving and leaving the district, moving away. So, that's where that number has fluctuated. And then, about 31 students for next year is the projection. And then, we work really closely with our teachers and our staff on supporting the students that we have here. So, before I came to Columbia Heights, I was a teacher in a setting four high school, and there's a lot of discussion about the school-to-prison pipeline and trying to avoid that, that your likelihood of that happening, of going to prison, facing incarceration, goes up when you're in a setting four. Also, a lot of our students of color happen to be the ones that are disproportionately represented in those numbers, and so, we work really hard with our teachers to keep our students in our setting-one-through-three programming, keeping them here in their community schools.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's kind of why I was curious about what that trend line has been. So, thank you very much.
Great questions. Thank you. Other questions?
I was curious as to how many juniors and seniors you have in that, in the program?
How many seniors?
Yeah, and junior, well, who will be moving on, I guess, or go next year?
When we looked at the numbers, we tried, we looked at them as a whole. When we get a little too much into the weeds in the school board meeting, we don't want to give away their, their private data. So, and part of that, too, is there's transition programming. So, it's not just nine, or it's not just K through 12, it's transition, too. So, they have the, the full range of students within their programming.
Okay. Thanks.
I think we could include that information in the, in the update?
Oh, okay.
On Friday?
That's fine. Thanks. Mary?
This is adjacent to 916, but I am also very grateful for this presentation. I think it's really helpful, and we want to celebrate the success of bringing children to a less intensive service, so back to our level, our setting threes, twos, and then hopefully ones, if it's possible. I'm curious, and maybe this is also probably a packet thing as well, but, as seen, we'll take notes. But one thing I'm curious about is how are we supporting our staff and our students for success when they come back from those more restrictive settings to a, I mean, it's a, it's very different setting three to setting four for all those reasons that, you know, we've talked about historically, just the structure and supports. And I just, yeah, I guess, not necessarily looking for an answer now, but something I think would be really helpful for all of us is what, what sort of support are these children getting, and how are we helping them to succeed to stay in those lesser intensive settings and continue to move forward through? So...
Sure. So, we work really closely with 916 on this. It is nice that the number is pretty small, so that Megan and I can attend those meetings. We meet with the parents, and we meet with the team, and we talk about what our programming looks like here in order to help the students start to get ready for the transition back. So, before they even enter our buildings, we have, start having those conversations about what support will look like. And then, 916 really works on looking at data. We look at the data together with them to make sure that the behaviors that we don't want to see are going down, so that the student can be successful when they come back into our building. So, a lot of pre-coaching with working with the teams, meeting with them multiple times monthly, and then, when students do come back, working with those teams and making sure that they have support in the schools to make sure that those students can be successful when they come back.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
I have to comment because 916 is my baby. So, because I really love all the work, you know, because it's so incredibly specialized, you know, these are very unique students that have very unique needs, and I'm, I'm glad that we're, we're working real collaboratively, you know, because I think that's really the key to the students' successes. So, I did, I guess, actually have a casual inquiry about how often, how often we're actually using, like, the consultation services for being able to preempt some of these placements, and if there's anything that we can do, you know, or I can advocate for at the, at 916 to be able to provide some better, some, some more services, so we can keep the students from, you know, having to be taken out of their, out of their, away from their friends and out of their, out of the district. And it's more expensive, too, to do that as well, transportation and everything.
We've been working with their consultation team several times this year. We ask them to come in and do some observations, and then Megan and I, again, with that, that big communication piece is key, meeting with them to talk about how much more time we think that they would need with the teams. They meet with the parents, they meet with Megan and myself, and then, it's, it's really important that we, we meet with them, so that when that consultation piece is over, Megan and I can follow up and continue to support even when that is not there anymore in real time, so that we can, we can go as needed.
Thank you. Thank you. And, yes, go ahead.
Just to add, my understanding is that 916 is interested in showcasing some of the consultative work that they've done in our district, because we've had some big successes with the Victory Program, for example, and that was, that was all part of those consultative services that year. So, I think more to come on that in the near future.
Well, I've been very, very excited about when that, that program started several years ago, because I, I saw that it just, it made, it made sense, you know? A lot of these students, when they're not successful, it, it makes it harder for them to be successful, you know? So, being able to give them every advantage, you know, and to have the, the classroom and the teacher prepared, and the student prepared, and the family prepared for the changes just makes sense, you know? I just, I'm just always hoping that we can maybe just even do a little bit better, so we just don't need the services in the first place, you know? So, but I know you guys are doing a great job, and I'm just been, I've been really excited about seeing those numbers come down, because, you know, we're keeping our kids here, and that's super important.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. And Superintendent Stenbik, you will provide the agreement for us, the actual agreement in our packets, and have that on board book for the next meeting?
Correct.
Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Next, we have Director Hennigens and Director Stunkel for the Community Edu, oh, I read that wrong, the Adult Basic Education Lease Amendment.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik, this evening, Director Hennigens and I are here to present to you the lease agreement for our Metro North ABE program. Of course, our presentation is premised on our school board, on our school district mission, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. This evening, we're focused on the adult learners in our community. You'll also hear this evening our focus on the core values of collaboration and community in addition to integrity, which is always a part of our presentations when it has to do with finances. Just a reminder for the board that our Metro North ABE program is based on the, the communities of Fridley and Columbia Heights. Columbia Heights Public Schools is part of the Metro North ABE Consortium with other North Metro school districts. This is the program at 4111 Central that provides adult basic education programs, ESL, citizenship classes, and others. So, we are coming to the end of our five-year lease at that site, and so, we worked together with leaders from the Fridley School District, with leaders with Metro North ABE, and Director Hennigens and myself to review different places that our site could, could locate at. We decided to stay where we are. We did decide that we would release two of the rooms that we had been renting, because during the pandemic, most of the programming, or all the programming during the pandemic went online, and much of it has remained online because of the convenience for, for the adult learners. So, we negotiated a lease, a two-year lease, because we're just not sure what the needs are going to be of our students in the next two years. And with that lease, then, Director Hennigens and the Finance Director for the Fridley School District thoroughly reviewed the lease, and at this point, I'm going to hand the floor over to Director Hennig speak about the specifics of the lease. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Stunkel. Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. So, we were, we're actually very fortunate with this lease. The, the increases that we've seen in a lot of our areas have been quite significant coming, looking at next year and moving into the future. And through negotiations with this lease, we are, the overall cost of this lease per year is actually less than it was the previous year, mainly because of the decrease in square footage, and also, the increase wasn't as, as high as, as what, you know, we've seen. So, overall, we're seeing just over a 5% increase in year one to our cost per square foot, and just about a 2.5% increase in year two. So, I feel like, and also Fridley feels like we're very fortunate in that. I do want to note that we do levy for, for the lease costs for this, and our levy is set for next year. And so, having a lease come in at higher than what we're levying for is, is potentially a problem for us in this scenario, because we decreased our square footage, and, and that increase isn't as high as, as, as what other areas have seen. Our levy is just fine. And so, both myself and Fridley Director feel very confident in this lease for two years. It's a shorter term, as Director Stunkel said, which gives them opportunity over the next year or two years to really figure out, are we truly transitioning fully to more Zoom-based, online-based, or what's that, what's a happy, happy place? So, what type of square footage footprint do they actually need? So, it gives us an opportunity to look and learn.
Can I add two more things? One is, I had read very closely the school board equity statement, and in it, it talks about an educational system that truly benefits each and every learner, and I just wanted to highlight that adults are also included in that each and every learner in the equity statement. So, tonight, we're here with, as an information item, and then, this will be brought as an action item to the May 9th school board meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. I noticed that the term says 60 months, 60 and then 23 months on the lease for space-max offices. We want to make sure that we're not...
That's fixed.
Kind of weird.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have one question. Since the, I, since ISD 13 and Fridley are both tenants in this lease, is there a separate, like, cost-sharing or use agreement between our district and Fridley, or how does that?
Nope. They'll take the same lease agreement to their board for approval. So, their board will prove this, and our board will prove this, and then, that's all that's necessary for the agreement.
So, use of space between the districts is just sort of...
Well, we're not, we're not actually using this, it's the ABE program that's actually using it themselves, so, which they are a separate entity.
That's part of that consortium.
Yeah, they're a separate entity than us. The employees at the ABE program are technically NOKHENUPIN employees, so, you know, we're just playing our role in it, which getting the space is part of our role. And for our district, we do purchase, some of the purchasing for technology comes through our district for it, but we bill them, and then, they pay, and basically, NOKHENUPIN's paying us. So, it's kind of a, a strange agreement to how it all works, but it's been operating this way for a very long time, pre, pre-me being here, which is a long time.
Mary?
Just something that came up for me while you were sharing your answer. Is it, so, on the off chance that one of the school districts, either us or Fridley, were to not approve this, would the other school district be on the hook for the entire thing, or how does that work?
No. It's, it's a joint, you know, agreement with both of us, and like I said, we, we lease for the, and the, and the operation cost comes from the revenues, the ABE program. So, we're not on the hook for those. That's, that's completely separate. None of that stuff rolls through us. It's just that lease, because they cannot do that themselves. And so, Fridley has 50% of it, we have 50% of it. When you guys approve the levy, the board approves the levy in our district, I'm including all of that information on there, because I'm the one that reports it for both of us, and then, it shows up on Fridley's lease levy, and it shows up on our lease levy. So, and Fridley's already approved their lease, you know, levy for the year, but again, I'm, I'm the one that's submitting that in their behalf as well. So, for next year, we've already been approved and are going to receive our revenue for the lease, so there really isn't any risk there from that standpoint, because that's where our cost is.
I mean, you really do everything in our district, and also for, like, you know...
And a few things for others.
Thank you so much for all of this, for that answer, and also for all the work that you do.
They can't have you.
I will note, just with my experience with commercial leases, that this rent rate per square foot is in line, very much so, with what commercial real estate is, even at this market where there's an abundance of commercial real estate, and the operating expenses are well within reasonable expectations as well. So, both these costs are reasonable for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll see you back at our next meeting.
Thanks.
Next, we have our school board Subcommittee on Community, Community Engagement Updates with Member Maderas.
So, our Subcommittee met following the work session on April 18th, and that was the first Subcommittee mem, uh, meeting with our new Subcommittee members. So, as part of that initial meeting, we spent some time reviewing the purpose and the charge of the Subcommittee, and we also discussed some ideas and strategies for community engagement that had been brought forward or identified by previous Subcommittees. And that information was shared subsequent to the meeting with the Subcommittee members for our review. And so, our plan moving forward is to review those, those, those strategies that had already been identified, and have some discussion about which of those strategies we might want to carry forward into the new Subcommittee's work, or implement going into next year, bring to the board for, for consideration, as well as have some discussion about some ideas that the new members might want to bring forward in the future. So, our hope would be that we'd have some discussion between the Subcommittee members before our next formal meeting, so that we'd be ready to take up some of those ideas and, and bring them forward here. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you. Any questions? We look forward to hearing more from the Subcommittee. Next, we have our first policy reading for Policy 516, Student Medications. So, this policy will be made available online for the public, and it'll appear in... and will appear on a future agenda item for approval.
Can I, can I ask a question about the policy? So I just, I think I understand this from my reading of the changes, but I just want to make sure that I understand correctly that even though this is a policy that's focused on student medication, that the language around administration of Narcan also would apply to any individual that might be in the building? So it's not just specific to administration in the case of a student need?
Can we invite Director Godfrey?
Director Godfrey is going to come up.
Oh, great. Thank you.
We're so glad you're still here.
I saw that on there. And so I also oversee health services in the district. So that, can you restate your question?
So it's a student medication policy? But the way I read the language is that's specific to Narcan administration? That if a need arose to administer Narcan, that policy would apply? That language applies not just to a student, but if there was someone, another individual in the building or on the premises that had that need?
Yes. And the SROs do not carry it, and so that's part of why we want to look even closer at the policy, because they don't have it on them as general officers, not at this time at least.
Sure, and that was actually my other question, so thank you for answering that. I think, you know, there's no one from the police department here, obviously, so maybe that's some follow-up question that I may have for the future with them, because I understood from news that the city had put out in previous years that our officers within CHPD, not SROs, but CHPD, had carried Narcan. So I don't know if there's been a change, or if that's inaccurate. But I do have some curiosity about that moving forward, just because, you know, we have, it might be relevant to consider whether SROs should also administer that in the future. I know that's a little bit, it intersects with this policy discussion, even though it doesn't directly speak to it. So thank you for answering that question. That helps.
And I can answer your question a little bit too regarding when the Subcommittee on Policy discussed this. This is where it fit kind of the best, and I agree with you. It's entitled "Student Medication", but that in the language in the policy is that if there is a guest, you know, somebody who has come to one of the buildings for an event or something that has a potential overdose, that the administration of that applies to that person as well. So we really looked at kind of all over that language, and Director Godfrey worked on that with her team as well. So, but yes, it fit best in this policy in terms of administering something like that, but it doesn't just apply to students.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Can I just add, the student medication, even that term, we looked at other policies from other districts, and it was similar language and similar terminology, so.
Great.
I just remembered that, so thank you.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming back up. Any other questions? All right, next, we'll move on to our action items. First up is Director Hennigens with the revised budget.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. Let me zoom a little bit here. I understand that this is-
My readers need readers now.
Well, what do you mean, you can't read that? That's just, that's just fine.
Well, if it was-
Okay, and I know that it's, you know, it still might be not the easiest thing, but when you're looking at it on the screen, and when you see it on TV, you'll see it better. So, thank you, this evening, the board was presented with the revised budget at a previous school board meeting. And so this evening, I'm seeking action to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three school year revised budget. And so what I want to do is just kind of just quick step through a few things, since we covered this in detail. And I'm going to start really in our middle column here with revenues and expenditures. So we can see that's our unassigned balance, and our total fund, general fund, makes up our unassigned revenues and expenditures, plus our total restricted and non-spendable. So that total will equal our total general fund. And so those restricted areas, typically revenues that we receive for very specific things, and we're expensing that, those dollars that we're receiving in total. And sometimes in certain areas, and I'm going to just kind of hit on some highlights of those, we're spending a little bit less, and we're carrying a balance for a reason, like capital. Or we're, we have a balance, and we're going to spend a little bit more of that balance, and we'll have less of a balance at the end, or we're going to zero it out and spend that, what we were carrying over. And so as our restricted dollars are kind of increasing, you'll see that unassigned decrease, and as our restricted dollars decrease, you'll see that unassigned kind of increase, and that's kind of how it works, especially in that grant area. So in that grant area, that's where all our COVID dollars fit, in that restricted area. So I will point out here, start, like I said, in the highlights, is our operating capital. So we have carrying a balance of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. This is our revenue, which has been pretty stable, or flat for quite a few years now. And I do anticipate at the end of this year that we'll spend a little bit more of that. And that's really due to, you know, really our buildings, and their age, and having to repair things, and just having a little bit of expenses, additional expenses this year, which, again, we were carrying a balance, so that's what that balance is for. Gifted and talented, again, you can see that we were spending the revenues we were receiving. I want to roll to safe schools, and you can see that we were carrying a balance of just over six thousand dollars. Typically, you know, we see the revenue that we're receiving for those safe schools dollars, that's where we spend for our security within the schools, our SROs, our security guards. Typically, we'll see the expenditures match. We were carrying a little bit of a balance, and we do expect to spend that out this year. And grants, I mentioned it before, it's significantly higher than what we've seen traditionally. And again, that's, again, from those COVID dollars. So we have a lot of expenses, you know, additional staff that we've brought on, and additional expenses that we've had due to COVID that are falling within that. So long-term facility maintenance, I want to point out, because that was carrying a negative balance coming into this year. Long-term facility maintenance is for deferred maintenance projects, new roofs, new windows, new doors, new flooring, new mechanical. So deferred maintenance projects. Again, we have buildings on average age over fifty years old, so they do have a lot of repair needs. And so that is a fund that can go negative. And it was, it was a negative over two hundred thousand. So the last couple of years, we've been bringing that closer to zero. And so we do anticipate to spend flat on that this year. So again, you know, looking at the total in that restricted area of seventeen million, just over six hundred thousand, and, you know, the total expenditures of seventeen million, just over nine hundred thousand, we're spending some of those balances in that area. And then at the top, that unassigned, again, which is the other part of the total of our general fund, we have thirty-eight million, six twenty-six, one seventy-seven in revenue. You know, happily see less of expenditures. Obviously, we are in tougher times, and trying to rebound our fund balance is a challenge in this time, in this environment. And so we have thirty-eight million, one fifty-three, one sixty-seven, so just short of a half a million dollar increase to our fund balance. It's, there, we could almost, you know, make adjustments weekly up and down as we, as we move forward for things that happen, whether it's somebody leaving, whether it's a need that needs to be hired, or whether it's something that needs to be repaired. And again, that's why fund balances exist. And so this is what we see right now with the budget coming into the end of the year. I do want to go through the other funds real quick. Food service fund. Food service fund is that fund that is healthy. We, through the pandemic, we had less staff, but we also were serving more meals, so we had more revenues and less expenditures, which meant a higher fund balance in that area. So we are anticipating with projects, especially right now at CA, redoing the serving line area and some things in the cafeteria, spending that fund balance a little bit. So you can see two million, one hundred and forty-four thousand roughly in revenue, and then two million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, almost forty-eight thousand in expenses, so decreasing that fund balance by about three hundred thousand dollars. Community education, we see about a one point nine, just over one point nine million in revenue, just under one point nine million in expenses. So you can see that we are going to be increasing, predicting to increase that fund balance in community education, which has, over the last few years, decreased a little bit each year. And that's, that's really looking at some of the additional funding, the hardship grants, and stabilization grant funding that we received, that we're actually expensing or utilizing those revenues this year. And then the Building Construction Fund is another fund that we anticipate, you know, to stay pretty flat. You can see that we were carrying a balance coming in. Debt Service Fund is another fund that, you know, is typically pretty flat. You know, we're levying for those dollars, and we levy a little bit over, you know, per statute, we're allowed to do that. Our dental fund is looking good. We had to increase our rates, just because expenses are going up. Health benefits, everything's going up. And so we're going to have to increase our rates, because we're going to see those expenses go up, and our revenue is staying about the same. So, you know, we want to make sure that there's a fund there for those dental expenses, because we are self-insured. So, and then our OPEB trust for our severance within the district, it's very healthy. It's definitely well-funded. It's dollars for very specific things. The market has been taking a hit, so we do anticipate that to be deficit again this year. And, but it's still very healthy. And long-term, in meeting with our financial consultants through Wells Fargo, we're still looking very good. So all funds, just over sixty-five million. So you can see all funds, you know, based on our restricted, and based on our, basically, our food service. You know, we'll see a little bit of a decrease, and our OPEB, we see a decrease in the overall. But the main point is that unassigned increasing. That's, that's the most important thing, because that's what directly impacts our fund balance policy. That's, questions?
Any questions for Director Hennigens? I'll make one, well, it might be a couple of comments.
One is that, for those that are watching, either in the room or online, the lack of questions is because we had a very robust conversation at our work session regarding the budget and the process, and where we are at. So I'd like to thank that, you know, Director Hennigens for taking the time to present to us, and for the board members here who asked a lot of really good questions during that time. I had something else, but I, oh, the Food Service Fund. Just again, comment for people who may be watching online, we talk about food service debt, and then you talk about a robust food service fund. There are very specific ways in which that funding can be spent, and covering unpaid student food service debt is not one of those ways. So we can't take money from that fund and put it toward student debt.
That is correct.
So just wanted to make sure that was, that was very clear, because I think that could lead some questions for people of, why are we talking about the student debt when there's a very healthy fund balance? So, but that's what we're using for Columbia Academy in the renovations in that area.
Correct.
Mary.
So, you know, this is something that we've covered before in work session and also in previous meetings. But one question, as, you know, we're talking about this in the community, that I keep getting is, but we're getting all this money from the legislature. And so I think maybe, can you speak at all about how that impacts where we're at and what we're looking for projected in the next years?
So we've definitely talked a lot about what 2% means. And so, you know, let's just start with that starting point, and what we've received over the last few years. You know, when we receive a 2% increase on the general formula, yes, that's additional revenue coming into the district, given stabilized enrollment, because it's all based off of the enrollment. But the reality is, is that our costs in the district, whether you're talking, looking at it all in a big picture of roll-up costs for staff and inflationary cost increases for supplies and services and everything that we're receiving, our costs are going up by more than 2%. They're going up by 4%, 5%, maybe in a good year, 2.5% or 3%. But they're still going up more than 2%, that 2% that we're receiving. And so that just really puts us in a mode of cutting every year. And so that's what we've been living. And the districts that aren't in that position are districts that are, you know, in the suburbs that are growing. And student enrollment continues to grow, and so they continue to have additional revenue with that student enrollment. We're, you know, we're a stable enrolled school district, so we're flat from an enrollment perspective. So that's, we can't, we can't live on that. So what, with these conversations with the legislature, which are, some of them are really great, talking about tying to inflation, talking about larger-than-2% increases, these are very meaningful things for us, especially the inflationary conversation and the general formula. One of the issues at hand is, you know, current status of where we are and what we've lived for all those previous years of only getting 2%. And we have COVID dollars falling off, and all districts have COVID dollars falling off. So you have those expenses. In some sense, you have those expenses there, because you were using those funds to keep the organization running and keep all the programming going, to ensure less cutting. And then you have these conversations that are happening at the legislature that have unfunded mandates associated with them. And so when you start talking about your percent increase, but then they're, in a sense, taking part of that increase away, half or more, because of unfunded mandates, where all we really did is sit back at that 2%, and we're still in that same mode of our costs are going up by more than that. I mean, you know, you look at, you know, I can rattle off ten different areas where we're getting more than 5% increase in our costs. Transportation, you know, subs, you know, you name it. And we're negotiating contracts, so it's really complicated. And yes, it seems like we're, we're, schools are getting better than ever, but, you know, from where we're starting from, and from the unfunded mandates, it doesn't feel like that. It's so, I'm very cautionary about, you know, dictating additional mandates to school districts that don't have money associated with them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I think one other thing that I want to highlight for our community too, Director Hennigens, as you're showing, our fund balance, that, you know, is growing, or I shouldn't say growing. We're putting some funds back into the, into the fund balance. It's a segue to the next three action items that we have coming up here as a board, and the very challenging things that we are tasked with doing in order to be financially responsible for the district. Because we have four hundred and seventy-some thousand dollar, you know, coming back into our fund balance, doesn't mean we have a half a million dollars to, you know, that we can just spend on anything. And part of that is, our fund balance policy as a board is 6% to 12%. And we have that because we need to be able to have cash flow available to meet our obligations. And we ran into a situation where there was cash flow borrowing that we've had to do. And so having a fund balance that is not 6% to 12%, it, quite honestly, costs us more money. And with this, you know, being positive, I'll say, in this revised budget, and having some money go back into our fund balance, we are not still meeting our fund balance policy of 6% to 12%. We are still below that. So I want to be very clear that, you know, that this extra almost half a million dollars isn't making us where we need to be. It's making us hurt less. Any other questions or comments?
I guess just a question related to your last comment. Can you remind us where this fund balance gets us in terms of a percentage?
Yeah, so this will get us closer to our fund balance policy. So it's moving us in the right direction. It's still below. So we'll be more in that five and a half range. So it's it's, we're heading in the right direction. But again, it's it's, and we, as Lorian or Chair Mueller suggested or said, you know, cash flow borrowing and and that's that's the concern. It's, you know, there's, we we get metered payments throughout the year and there's certain times of the year where we get larger payments. Debt payments are one of those times of year where we see larger payments that are our expenses beyond our day to day expenses. And if we don't have the cash on hand at that point in time, then we have to borrow with aid anticipation and as we've done twice in the last three years. And and so really that fund, a strong fund balance is what prevents that from happening and 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 prevents that cost to the district of having to borrow that cash.
Just one quick thing related to that cash flow borrowing. I know you've talked about this to us before, but lots of, this is not as, that cash flow borrowing situation is not unique to our district, correct? Like, because that was one of the things that I heard from the community too was we're like, well, we have to borrow cash. What does that mean? I'm like, my understanding is that this is, it's not ideal. Nobody wants to do it. But this is also, we are not out of, we are not the only ones that are in that position. Is that correct?
Oh, that's correct. And it was it was a growing number this year. And, you know, majority of the districts across the state, back when the state was giving us less than two percent and was doing state aid shifting because they didn't have enough money. So they were holding back our revenue. Majority of the districts in the state were cash flow borrowing through different various forms of of borrowing that they can do. That, you know, and right now we're doing aid anticipation. The aid's coming. We just don't have it right now, so we're borrowing based off of that for cash flow purposes.
Thank you so much. Laura.
I'm wondering, are we going to have the fund, the the fund balance to be able to support our roll up cost coming up here shortly? Are we looking at possibly having to cash flow borrow?
So a lot of that depends on what happens at the legislature level. A lot of that depends on those.
Very nervous.
There's a few of the the mandates that are still being talked about and still making their way that have a large cost and not, you know, it's not a large cost in the sense of, oh, that's, you know, ten thousand more dollars or twenty more thousand. Not that that's not a lot of money, but no, we're talking about larger costs, like half million dollars, a million dollars. And and so, you know, that that's a lot.
I was seeing, I've seen a couple of them that have bigger tails than that.
Yeah.
So.
So in in our groups, you know, my group, from the finance side and other groups, I feel like I've done a pretty good job of trying to ask those questions of districts, get get the, you know, total cost of ownership for that mandate and then putting an average per pupil dollar amount to it so that the the people that are voting on this at the legislature level can see, you know, what the true cost is. So that they can see that, you know, these mandates are going to equal two and a half percent. If you give us five, you just, you know, you took two and a half percent of that for these new mandates. So it's not, you know, it's 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 just not, it's unfortunate because we need them in our in our general aid.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Director Henneken? So you'll be back at the May ninth meeting for, oh, no, we're doing it now. Just kidding, this is an action item. I'm just not used to this much discussion under action items, so please forgive me. I need a motion to approve the revised budget as presented.
So moved.
By Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? Hearing then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Henneken, you get to stay up here and we have Director Bennett joining us for the discontinuance or reduction of positions for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four resolution.
Chair Mueller, members of the Board Superintendent Stenbik. At the January twenty fourth School Board meeting, the School Board did direct administration to start looking at recommendations for efficiencies in the school district. Since that time, we've been busy meeting and looking for efficiencies. We did go through the list of reductions at the April eighteenth work session in great detail. So tonight, we're here to ask approval of the resolution to discontinue reduced positions listed on this resolution. I just want to point out that these efficiencies are being made due to lack of enrollment and lack of funding. And the only programmatic discontinuance would be Arabic at the secondary level.
Thank you. Since this is a resolution, I will read this resolution and ask for the motion and second to move this forward. Resolution discontinuing and reducing positions due to enrollment and departmental efficiencies. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number Thirteen adopted a resolution on January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions. And whereas said recommendations have been received and re and considered by the School Board, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number Thirteen as follows. The following positions or portions thereof be discontinued due to enrollment, program elimination, curricular changes, and departmental efficiencies. Two F T E net dean of student positions, four point four F T E net licensed teacher positions, eight F T E net district wide non licensed positions, all teacher positions with tier one licensure, tier two licensure expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, or out of field permission licensure by law need to renew. All teacher positions that were one year contract, long term substitute positions, and all positions cut for performance. I get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura, and a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Jessica?
I'd like to start, I guess, with some general questions. I know some of this we went over in the work session, but I think it's important when we're we're making reductions that we talk about this at the regular meeting as well. So I'll preface with that. But I guess first, first question I have is, can you talk a little bit about sort of how these recommendations for reduction are are identified, the process for that, kind of who's involved with that and how different alternatives are considered?
Superintendent?
So these kinds of efficiencies happen in two rounds. So in round one, it's efficiencies that are either due to performance or efficiencies or cuts that need to be made by statute. So a tier one license expires and so many of those folks will come back. They'll reapply and renew those licenses and come back. Then we do, after that round one, then we spend time really crunching the numbers and looking at finances, looking at class sizes, historical enrollment, to be able to weigh in and make those make those decisions. Different administrators are involved in in the conversations, but really looking at this, for this round, many of the positions are due to just efficiencies, right sizing. So, for example, right now, the average class size at the Columbia Heights High School is twenty three. If you look at, if you take into account the whole building, we're not staffed for that for that low of a number. We're staffed, we're, or budgeted for that low of a number. So it's it's really, at the secondary level, particularly at the high school, there's a lot of student choice in electives. So and there's, when there's areas that students aren't choosing, that's where the reduction, the for now reduction happens for next year. With the, you know, with, so with that being said, none of these reductions that we're talking about are really, are are at all for tonight, performance related. It's it's financial by and large. So there are a lot of different methods. So principals or directors come in and come to a meeting and and talk about, you know, what's going well, what they, where they think they can cut. I'll just say that we've cut, as Director Henneken said, every year, over seven million dollars in the last five years, since two thousand fifteen. Thank you. And so no one really felt like there was anywhere to cut. And so these are very painful cuts, with the exception of some of the right sizing and class sizes that we were able to to look at. Other than that, it's, it's, we don't have much, many, any places really to cut, so.
And then related to that, if we were to have an infusion of resources or enrollment, would there be some consideration in the future of reinstating some of these positions or programs?
Absolutely. In fact, there is a priority list of, you know, whether it's departmental or or building wide, what some of those priority areas would be. And we really would be grateful for that infusion of resources and we would really be grateful to be able to bring bring some of these positions back.
And then you had mentioned sort of the the impact of these cuts that we're at a point now after reduction year after year, that there are fewer and fewer places to to look to. I know that we've talked as a board about the general principle around reductions, trying to stay as far away from the classroom as possible, recognizing that that's the goal. I guess, could you just talk a little bit about how the reductions that are before us tonight would impact student success?
So looking at the elementary level, let's start with the elementary level. There are no classroom teacher reductions at the elementary level. There are no, there are no specialist teacher reductions at the elementary level due to enrollment numbers at the different elementary schools. We do have a reduction in the area of our reading intervention, unfortunately, and that's grant funded. That person will will stay stay working within Columbia Heights Public Schools, however. And that's the, that is part of the rationale for the reduction in the dean positions. It's as far away from the classroom as we could get for right now. And then at the secondary level, it was more looking at the smaller class sizes and being able to condense and collapse some sections.
Thank you. And I have one last question. And similarly, I guess, in general, what impact will these reductions have on working conditions for teachers and staff?
Well, I think anytime we make a reduction, it's, it brings a whole level of, a whole nother layer of challenges, right? We are, we hope to, the plan is to maintain our our current class size ratios. For, so budgeting and and planning for twenty four to one approximately on average for a building, an elementary building, and on average, a thirty to one at the secondary building. So really hoping to maintain that for for teaching staff. But when we are eliminating some auxiliary staff, they have really important jobs. They play really important roles. Some of the, some of the funding that we received through federal COVID funding, for example, we were able to hire on building monitors. Well, they could go and help in a classroom, they could go and help in the lunchroom, they could go help in the playground. That's crucial. So those are some of the 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 places. Another factor is with the with the reduction in a dean position, that means that the principals are going to be supporting less instruction in the classrooms and dealing more with all of the other, you know, running areas to run a building. So definitely, none of these cuts are are favorable or anything that we wanted to do. Yeah, there will be an impact and that's why we really are are hoping that the Minnesota State Legislature will come through, not with unfunded mandates, but with, you know, funding for the cross, special cross subsidy, funding for the E L cross subsidy. We desperately need that funding.
And I think it's an important thing to note, too, that there is lots of conversations out there regarding the proposed funding and changes in funding, increased funding that's coming to schools. We we don't have anything yet. And we we have to let staff and teachers know what is happening with their position. We can't wait until the end of May when potentially we would get that information. And so as Superintendent Stenbik said, there's a priority list of ways that, you know, things that we can do hopefully to to bring, you know, back from some of these reductions. But we 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 can't wait for that and it's not fair to the staff to wait. Other questions or comments? Jessica?
That was it for questions, but I do just, I I do just want to have some discussion on this resolution. I mean, in hearing that information and thinking about the conversation that we had, the the earlier action item around the budget and our our conversation in the work session, it's really clear to me that there really aren't, we're we're at a place where there really aren't any reductions that we can make that avoid having impact on student learning and on on teacher and staff working conditions. And, you know, this is always a difficult meeting every year. This is my first time at the board table having this discussion. But as a parent in the district, as a community member, as somebody who has been a supporter of what we're trying to accomplish in our public schools, it's something that I I've watched and it it's it's always difficult. But I I also think for for folks watching, for families in the district, for our employees, when we have to make reductions year after year, it goes beyond difficult and really becomes demoralizing for folks. It's exhausting to have to 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 watch this happen year after year. And even when we are able to reinstate some things, we've lost good people often in the process. And we have, you know, caused distress to our to our community and that's, that's really difficult. You know, we heard that this has been something we've had to do every year since two thousand fifteen. I I have a fifth grader, he's my oldest, and that's been my entire experience with the district, watching year after year. I have not had a year as a parent in this district where I have not watched these annual reductions happen for budgetary reasons. I mean, certainly, there are always, there are always staff changes that that occur year to year. So I I just want to be really honest about that, that, you know, we're getting to a point now with the the way that our costs are rising, the unpredictability of funding, the increased needs we have across our district, that I I don't, it's diff, it's hard to sit at this table and talk about this being difficult when really it it's it's a lot deeper than that for for a lot of folks within our district and within our larger Heights community. That being said, that's, the financial realities are the financial realities. And I understand that we have a fiscal responsibility as a board to make sure that we're balancing our budget. We're not tipping into deficit spending. We're we're trying to build that fund balance back up and all of those considerations that have been mentioned. So that was sort of my long winded discussion point. But I I just, I want to be really clear that this is not, from my perspective, a process that we we should be having to go through year after year after year. And to get away from that, it is going to require some additional resources. And that's, you know, beyond what we're here to talk about tonight. But I I I just felt like it was important to to have that be part of the discussion. So thank you.
Yeah. Well, and I think, Jessica, you had commented how some of our conversations have been to keep, you know, cuts as far away from the classroom as possible. I, in my opinion, we're we're as close as we can get and as far as we can get all at the same time. That continuing on, you know, with the funding that we currently are getting and if we continue in that pattern and we we can control all the expenses that we can control and there's expenses that we cannot control, that, you know, this time next year, this is going, you know, could potentially be even more painful than it is now. Because we, there's, we're just at that point where, you know, you you make all of the the efficiencies that you can and you can't become any more efficient without real significant changes and impacts to programs and and teaching and learning. Laura?
Yeah, I've been on the board for a few years here, so I've been through a number of these here. This will, I would say, is by far the most painful that I have yet experienced. This will, I would say, is by far the most painful that I have yet experienced because we don't have any way of creating any kind of a soft landing, because we've been able to maybe draw down some of that fund balance so that we weren't having to make as harsher cuts every year. This year, there really, there, there isn't anything left. So this is, and every year, I mean, these are, these are, these are people, these are positions, these are, these are valuable members of our community, they're important to our students, and they're, they're important to our community. And I, I'm, I'm very nervous about what we might, actions we may have to take next year, or maybe even if we have to make any adjustments later this year, if they do put more demands upon us without giving us adequate resources for being able to meet those, those demands. So I guess this is my little pitch to the legislature to please lay off for a little bit. And, yeah.
Yeah, Mary. Just want to reiterate that, again, we have literally done everything that we can, and over the years, same as Jessica, we've watched these cuts come and come, and you're right, this is, we, we can't do this anymore. This really is in the hands of the legislature, and I think you're right. And, and to be fair, we try to make cuts as far away from the classroom as we possibly can, so it doesn't impact students, but we all know it does. Every cut, every cut. It doesn't matter. And it is, it's, this is, you know, we talked at the school safety, the school safety thing that we had last week, we talked about having that special person and make sure that every student has a special person in the class. And we are, we are moving or cutting somebody's special person. And that, it, this is the worst night of being on school board, because we know that this is, these are, these are not just names, these are people in our community, these are people in our schools, these are our children's confidence, the person that smiles when they see our kids come in. And we know that. And again, like, we, you know, for everybody watching, please, like, advocate for your call to the legislature and tell them, because this, this is not okay. So. I appreciate your, your comments. I think one other point I'd like to make, just for our community that's watching as well, as we talk about the fund balance having been drawn down, and Director Henneken's talked about COVID dollars. You know, this, this board approved budgets and approved efficiencies and reductions, relying and using COVID dollars to fall back on, to provide services so that some of those cuts weren't as deep for the last couple of years, at a time where it was volatile for, for everybody, both financially, professionally, you know, for students. And so with those dollars falling away, you know, some of the things that we were able to add, the support systems we were able to put in with that, there just isn't funding for that. But that was an intentional decision by this board, knowing that we would continue to have challenges, but to try to make sure that students and staff had the most support when they needed it the most. But we're, we're here now as well. Any other discussion? All right, we will proceed to vote. Mary, this is a resolution. Will you call the roll?
Yes.
Hool?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Granlin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller? Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you all for your discussion. We have next Director Bennett for our discontinuance or reduction of non-affiliated positions for 2023-2024. And Director Henneken.
Chair Mueller, members of the Board Superintendent Stenbik, presented the April 18th work session was information on the non-affiliated positions that we are recommending to reduce or eliminate for next school year for 2023-2024. Some of these positions, again, are ones that we, were created with COVID funding, and other ones are ways to make reductions as far away from the classroom as possible. So tonight, I'm here seeking approval of the resolution to terminate, eliminate, and reduce non-affiliated positions that are listed on it, and all these staff members have been notified.
Thank you, Director Bennett. As this is a resolution, I will read this and then ask for a motion and second to vote on this. Resolution relating to the termination, elimination, and reduction of positions. Whereas the following positions are employees in Independent School District Number 13 as listed below for non-affiliated positions, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, that those persons or positions listed above in the Independent School District, in Independent School District Number 13, are hereby terminated, eliminated, or reduced at the close of the current 2022-2023 school year or on the date otherwise noted. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said employees regarding termination, elimination, or reduction. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution relating to the termination, elimination, and reduction of positions?
So moved.
Laura, and a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. Mary, you call the roll, please. Hool?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Maderas?
Granlin? Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller? Aye. Resolution passes. Our next action item is the termination of probationary teacher contracts resolution, resolution two. Director Bennett and Director Henneken.
Chair Mueller, members of the Board Superintendent Stenbik, this is the second of two resolutions presented to the board for the probationary teacher non-renewals. We brought one back on April 11th, and this is the second resolution. So tonight, we're here seeking approval of the names listed therein for non-renewal at the end of the current school year.
Okay. Thank you. Like the others, I'll read this resolution, and then we'll do a motion and a second. Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contracts of probationary teachers. Whereas the person listed herein are probationary teachers in Independent School Number, District Number 13, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, that pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A.40 subdivision 5, the teaching contracts of those persons listed on page 2 of this resolution, probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 13 are hereby terminated and not renewed at the close of the current 2022-2023 school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of their contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be in the substantially, shall be in substantially the following form as noted on the resolution. Can I get a motion to move, or to approve the resolution for the termination of probationary teacher contracts resolution, resolution two?
So moved.
Julie, and a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? Jessica?
I probably should have noted on the last resolution, but the, this resolution and the one before it, just for anyone watching, are, are tied to that first resolution that we passed. So that's why the majority of the discussion was on that first resolution. Secondly, I just, I know we've said it in previous meetings, when we have had to consider this resolution, but I, again, am appreciative that we've moved as a district to this two-step process for having to pass resolutions on termination. I do think that, that helps buy some time for discussion and to see if there are other options, and also to just humanize the process as much as possible and be thoughtful about the impact that terminations have on, have on employees and their families. So thank you for that.
Yeah. Thank you, Jessica. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none will proceed to vote. Mary, you call the roll, please. Hool?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Granlin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller? Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you, Directors Bennett and Henneken. I can't even say his name. Henneken. Next, we'll move on to board topics. Any of any board topics? I've got two. As what somebody had noted earlier, the High School Play is this weekend, so you can buy your tickets in advance, but come see the students perform. There is also a home synchronized swim meet this Thursday at 5:00. So if anybody's interested to see, our, our team members went to state the last two years. So it's a fun experience that is a routine meet on Thursday at 5:00. Any other board topics? Sorry, Mary, any other others? Mary?
Can I just, I'm sure we're going to talk about this later anyway, but congratulations to Alyssa Isaacs as the local 710 Teacher of the Year. She's at North Park School for Innovation and so excited. So excited to celebrate with her on Tuesday, the 2nd of May, so, shout out.
And our Employee of the Year, James Philippi, was the Employee of the Year at the high school. He's the Evening Lead Custodian, so, congratulations to him as well.
Great. Thank you. Any other board topics? All right. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:47.